Okay, welcome everyone to our Mount Isa City Council Budget Consultation. We're just getting set here now, so I'd just like to firstly advise everyone that today is being recorded and it's livestreamed as well. So I'll just read out our disclaimer for it. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy, which can be viewed on council's website. It is aimed that recordings will be bookmarked, archived and made available for viewing on council's website within 72 hours from the conclusion of the meeting. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded by remaining in chambers. It is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Please be advised that no protection is afforded to the public for comments made during the meeting, which are subsequently challenged in a court of law and determined to be defamatory or slanderous. Councilors, council officers and public are required to adhere to council standing orders policy, model meeting procedures and chamber conditions of entry. Thanks very much and welcome Tony and Joseph, good to see yous here. Just like to quickly acknowledge the Kalkun people and their elders past and present for the lands on which we meet today. So today we wanted to offer the opportunity again, this is the second meeting for councillors to, for the public to address council around the draft budget that we've produced. The, we're on track to have the budget approved by council on the 23rd of June, but we've got a week to consider any public comments and offerings after these, this last of these meetings today. So next week we'll be considering all that to make any changes to the budget or amendments that we view are required. So, and then it'll go up to the council to be approved 23rd of June. So we offer this document to provide Mount Isa citizens with the draft budget, in that we've got key assumptions and about how we build that budget and also any known issues that we can predict and project into the future about. So we forecasted financial results, we forecasted the statement of financial position for the council at the end of that. And there's also in the document, there's the figures around each department of council that people will be able to have a look at. We also have included a 10-year financial forecast and the assumptions around that. So that's responsible management of a budget that we build. And within it also is the capital works, the fees and charges. And there's also, we've included this year a comparison of our council with similar councils within Queensland. So that's, that should be helpful in just sort of determining where we sit. Okay, so just a few of our key assumptions I'd like to, just to outline. The all controllable revenue streams are assumed to increase by 3.75%. We've assumed that the Mount Isa Waterboard dividend will be 5.08 million based on a historic trend. Financial assistance grants revenue assumed to be paid in advance by the Australian Government and they will increase by 1.5%. We've assumed that the external batch plant sales forecast to be 0.61 million with internal sales of 1.24 million. That's the concrete plant. Revenue from flood damage works, we're going to assume to be 2.4 million, assuming it will rain, in line with for year-end '21. And all other revenues are assumed to be comparable to for the year-end '21 as well. Okay, there's some general assumptions around, well, there's only one, is COVID-19 will be managed and will continue under the current sort of restrictions that we have at the moment. There's a range of expenditure assumptions. We should have a significant decrease in materials and services costs due to less reliance on contractors. The employee costs, we've got a headcount of 227, so that's based on the revised organisational chart, which was updated 22nd of April. Bulk water costs are assumed to be the same as year '21, this financial year. And the waste levy is assumed to be 2.4 million based on forecast volumes and the nature of waste. Labour capitalisation is assumed to be 1 million. And depreciation costs assumed based on register and audit recommendations are up from the year of '21. And the certified agreement wage rise is the final one, which will be 2.5%. Also have a range of assumptions around the long-term financial forecast, but they're outlined quite well within the document, so I won't go into those here at the moment. And we have with us, I'd just like to mention quickly that we are, some of the, we've got 31.07 million, I think it is, down for Capital Works for the year, so we're quite excited about that. And that's based on grant monies that we have already received as well for some of it, so. But some of the capital expenditure projects, the Materials Recovery Facility, which is a $6 million project, that'll be built out of our Waste Management Facility. We also have the Gallipoli Park Pump Track and Recreation Development, which will be going ahead with money in the next year's budget. And a really lovely project is the Smart Watermeters rollout, that's worth 2.95 million project, which is made up of 1.77 million from funding in the Queensland Government. So that's been procured at the moment and should be going ahead fairly shortly. Other major projects, the Family Fund Park, ah, sorry, the Fund Precinct Redevelopment Project, which is worth 5.1 million. And that's about all I have to talk to at the moment. I've got with me here the CEO, David Keenan, and also some, I've got Ian Honeyman and Stephen Richardson from our Finance Department, who will be able to address any questions that might be asked. So thank you, do you want to add anything Stephen?
I'll defer to the floor and deal with the queries as they come.
Okay, thanks very much. So anyone in the public would like to ask questions, it's your opportunity now. Just state your name for the record please, Joseph.
Joseph Castellano, I'm representing Commus North West tonight.
Joseph, could I just ask you to speak right into the mic, yeah, just for the recording, yeah, thanks.
I'm representing Commus North West, is that better?
A little bit more, yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of inquiries on the actual statement of income and expenditure, the draft forecast. There seems to be a fair decrease in the actual grants, from 10.8 in financial year '20 to 6.9 in '21, and then increasing slightly in your budget at 7.3. I would assume council has a strategy in place to try and maximise applications of any grants that are possible, because it seems to be a fair decrease over those two years. I'm not sure what would have led to that, but does anyone have any light to shed on why the grants have decreased?
I'll just, I'll just comment, I mean, we, there is an obligation on council to contribute money towards grants, but usually we try to get the bulk of it from state government programs and projects and also Australian government projects as well. So sometimes that chops and changes with what the requirements of the grant are. And some of them are as low as 50/50, but most of them are, you know, usually up towards the high end of grant monies being received. But I'll just pass to Stephen for...
The grant figures you're referring to comprise a number of areas. So the largest one by far is the grants that we get for roading recovery for flood events. We did have much, and those flood events run on a three-year cycle. So you get the money and it's taken to revenue over three years as you do the work. This particular wet season, we've had very minimal events which have required repair to the road network. So that is the single, single largest reason why that is dropping, because we haven't had a lot of floods. We also have a number of one-off grants for various events. And by their very nature, they're difficult to predict. So that figure for 7.3, I'd be reasonably confident that it won't be any lower than that, because the component that's known about is reasonably certain. In other words, flood recovery work plus grants that have already been approved. We do get, we had one approved today, that's not included in that. It's not a large amount, but it's still $75,000. Fortunately, that's probably the best estimate that I have available at this stage.
And the other question related to other revenue, there's been a fairly major increase in other revenue from financial year '20 to '21 and then on to '22. From what I've gone through prior to this information session, I can't see where the major source of that other revenue is coming from.
Well, that's a fairly easy one. The Waterboard dividend is significantly higher than what was forecasted. And that is one of the issues that we've identified in the budget. It was 3.6 million higher than what we expected.
Through you Deputy Mayor, we are undertaking advocacy to see if we can get some sort of better level of certainty around what the water dividend will be, because it's not matching our forecast at the moment. And we don't have much control over that, it's between the Waterboard and Treasury. So we need to get something that gives a lot more surety. Otherwise, we can't do proper financial planning over a 10-year period, which is what we're required to do under, by the Queensland Treasury Corporation.
Yeah, that's good to know that it's not coming from rates, charges or other levies. I mean, I know rates are detailed separately, but that was my concern, was that where the actual revenue was being generated from. And when this council went to the election, there was a commitment not to increase rates. Is that still a commitment?
Sorry, Joseph, could you just...
When the council went to the election, one of the points that was raised was that this council would not increase rates.
Look, I know I can speak for when we campaigned, or when I campaigned with the group that I was with, Progress. We, we know that to build a responsible budget and to manage responsibly a council, that it's pretty near impossible to not increase the rates during a term. And in fact, I will point to the fact that we did have a zero increase last term, but that was COVID-driven. It wasn't driven by electoral promises. And the reality is that councils do have to comply with legislation. We also have to report to the Queensland Treasury through the Queensland Audit Office. And there's quite, you know, rigid controls about how we provide information, how we build budgets and how we actually control the expenses and the finances of the council. So it's not sort of open slather for us or anybody to go to an election and say, "We're going to have this or that in a rates increase", without doing the homework or the budget building that's needed to be done. So I hope that answers your question. And I, for one, certainly didn't promise there wouldn't be any increases, but because they are a bit like most taxes, you can't avoid them.
No. Yeah, we just had some feedback from some of the members of Commus North West that they've had increases in their, in their rates, which followed the revaluation of land here in Mount Isa. It seems to be when the formula was recalculated, that it actually ended up in a, in some cases, fairly potential increase.
Yeah, there's a, there is some confusion around land values, and I'll ask Stephen to speak to this in a second, but my understanding of it, and all councillors are ratepayers, in fact, some councillors play, pay two or three sets of rates, you know, so we're, we're pretty keen on it as well. But yeah, the reality is that with land valuations, that makes up a very small part of the formula that calculates rates. And even though there's an increase or a decrease and there's movement within land valuations, overall, at the end of the day, the rates needs to be balanced out so that they come up with the right amount of money to pay for the operations of council to deliver all the services that we need to the residents and the businesses of Mount Isa. So, you know, as you can appreciate, you know, most things like fuel and electricity and other things tend to go up every year. So, you know, councils, like any other business, you know, we cop that as well. And therefore, we need to, you know, cover our costs to build a, to have a responsible financial management, which we strive to do. All right, Stephen, do you...
I'll make some comments. There's 58 different rating categories in Mount, sorry, 68, my apologies, different rating categories in Mount Isa. So in the June '21 budget previous year was set, they looked at the rating values which had come out from the Valuer General in Brisbane. And the average across Mount Isa for residential property was a decrease of 44%. Obviously, it varied depending on which suburb and which category of what the value of the dwelling was. The instructions to the external valuer was that we needed to produce the same amount of general rates revenue, with the undertaking from council for a zero-dollar increase overall, to raise the same pool of money. So the report from the independent consultant, we had to review the weighting base, put larger percentage increases on some of the commercial, particularly the mining sector. Some of the residential, the higher value residential properties, rate per hundred dollars was higher to cover for the lower dollar value per hundred dollars for the lower value residential, such that the overall pool remained at the zero increase. There will have been a few ratepayers who would have had an increase in, that would have been the exception. And hopefully, it would have been those with higher value residential houses or in the commercial sectors, not the retail sector, but particularly the mining and mining-related industries. And that exercise isn't perfect. It is the desire to achieve some sort of social equity, if you can use that term, so that the burden is shared across the, across the Mount Isa population.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks Stephen. So yeah, the, there was an example quite a few years ago where the rates, the land valuations did increase significantly, but the rates certainly didn't go up the same percentage. They were, there was an adjustment and they did, they did increase, but it was matched to what revenue and expenses were needed by council. And it's similar when they go down, there is an adjustment, but it's a very small part of the formula that makes it up.
Through you Deputy Mayor, you've got a bit of a talk to do. If you could, that'd be great, except might answer some questions.
Just on the fees and charges that are one of the arms that fee councils offers. Councils are typically known for the three Rs, roads, rates and rubbish. I'd like to add a fourth one to that list, and that's recreation. And councils provided funds in the draft budget to maintain and repair our road network. The rates have been held at 3.75% increase for the whole rates package and across that, as Stephen said, the 68 categories. The aim is for owner-occupied residences to remain below that 3.75%, while commercial and industrial will carry a bit more of the burden. On the rubbish side, without going through all of the charges, for general waste, people taking their car van or ute to the tip, the fee remains at $5. And if they're taking a single axle trailer with it, it's actually reduced to $12 from 14. So a little bit better. On the recreation side, the aquatic centre entry fees have generally increased by 50 cents for residents in all of the age categories. Non-residents, however, the fees have been introduced at a dollar an entry higher than the fees for residents. And on top of that, there's still the 10-session passes available, 10 times the normal entry price, but you get an 11th session included in that for free. On-air four-legged friends from animal management, dog registrations for the coming financial year. They've introduced a new category, that for the price of two years, you can get three years registration. So typically, a de-sex microchipped male or female dog, one year will be $35. But for a three-year registration, you only pay 70 bucks. Similarly, with the cats, de-sex microchipped male or female cat, one year registration's $26, which is only up a dollar, and $52 for the three years. Just to go over a couple of the points that, where we are spending that money in council this coming year. Council is continuing to invest in young people with its trainee program. The program's providing nine young people at present with the opportunity to attain work-related skills to make them more employable at the end of their traineeship. The trainees will be working in customer service, finance, horticulture, library, records, information technology, HR and animal management. And these positions are in addition to council's continued support for apprentices. The Living with Lead Alliance, which is very much based in Mount Isa, the grant for it has been raised $20,000 to help the organisation increase the community awareness of lead-related problems. On the community event side of things, council continues to support many of the community events that are coming up. Christmas carols, New Year's Eve, the Nidoc Week, to name a few. Council's also a sponsor of Mount Isa Rodeo, the Mount Isa Show, Fishing Classic and the soon-to-happen Legends of League. So they're supporting it again next year as well. Council's also providing 50,000 in community grants that may be applied for in a couple of funding rounds this through the year. And also, as proved very popular this year, the free plant scheme will again be run in the next financial year.
Thanks very much Ian. Bernard, we've got the Director of Infrastructure here, Acting Director, would you like to talk to the Capital Works budget?
Sorry Bernard.
You might need a microphone there.
How's that? So the Capital Works budget as it stands at the moment is in the order of $31 million. That will be fine-tuned over the next month or so, depending on the current projects and how they're progressing and whether they need to be carried over into the, into next financial year. There's obviously a significant emphasis on infrastructure. We get some external funding from the state for our road system and also our own provision as well. And the road, roads and drainage expenditure next year is just on six and a half million dollars. And that, that covers work on our rural road network, but also a significant resealing program for the streets within, within Mount Isa. Water and sewerage is a significant emphasis of council. The capital program there is $7 million, as the Deputy Mayor indicated. There is quite a significant project as far as smart water meters is concerned, and that's a fair chunk of that funds. But, but it's one of our most critical functions, the provision, particularly the provision of safe water and we need to keep spending money in that space. And there's probably 30 or 40 projects regarding that. Parks and open spaces is $6 million, approximately $6 million. Significantly bolstered by work on the Family Fund Park. We have some internal works around our corporate systems IT buildings, which it's a very large organisation, very, very complex organisation and matters. Well, systems such as IT need to be continually upgraded.
Sorry Bernard, just going back, we've got some funding in there for the Miners Memorial?
Yes, yes, we've got a couple of, a number of, some projects unfortunately you can't do in the one year. You've, you've got to go through and work up the concepts, work up the plans, find the funding. The Miners Memorial is certainly in that space. We will start doing some work on the design and the location and so forth, with a view to constructing it the following year. We have a significant development at Gallipoli Park as well, which is in that space as well, although we're, we hope to start work in the next month or so, but that, that will, that will follow that in the next financial year as well. Buchanan Park, councillors discussed that this week, there'll be well in excess of $1 million spent. It's obviously a significant facility with lots of needs as far as infrastructure. But, but that's, that's a particular emphasis, just going back to page one. And I'm almost there, I think we need to do some significant fire upgrades in this particular precinct here. And also continual expenditure on fleet. Hopefully, a major upgrade in the order of $300,000 for the lookout. It's, it's well visited, but is a little bit tired and dated. So that just gives you an indication of sort of the range of capital works we hope to deliver over the next financial year.
Thanks very much Bernard. So that's a total of 31.7 million approximately that we're forecasting in next year's budget. Also, and the following year it'll taper down a bit to 23 million at this stage, with known, known assumptions and known projects. Yeah, so I think, having done that, I think we've explained everything pretty much. Is there any more questions from the floor? Just, just say your name for the, for the record, yeah, thanks here.
During the 2020 election, there was talk of a motorsports project precedent started within the city. And I've just noticed that there's no, no expenditure there at all in leases or anything at all. Phil, I'm just trying to go through and work out where that might be at.
Look, I can tell you at this stage that we are waiting for the land to be allocated to that project. And we haven't started any design work or any fundraising for that activity, because we don't know if we've got the land yet. Once that's, you know, there has been a little bit of movement, I must say, in recent times, but to releasing the land to us. But certainly, most stakeholders are really keen, you know, to see that happen. So I'm not sure if there is anything in the budget for planning at the moment, is it?
Through, through you Deputy Mayor, there's not at the moment. The mayor did write a letter to the minister asking about the land to be released. That went up to, by the last council meeting, or the council meeting before that, was in the correspondence report. We'll keep having a look and seeing what we can do. Well, we haven't had a response to that letter that was sent to the minister, so once we get a response back from them, we can probably move a bit faster on that. There'll be some other funding streams that are coming up. I noticed the federal government announced the extension to the local roads and community infrastructure programme, so we should be able to see if that's an option. They've also indicated they've increased the amount of funding going into building better regions as well. Now, we've already put an application in for that, the next round, and that was focused primarily on Mount Isa at one hundred years, and so those events have all been bundled up into a funding, funding application in that area. But we can, we can hopefully get a response from the minister on the land tenure, and we can certainly, the Deputy Mayor and I might even be able to follow that up next week at the Western Alliance of Councils when they meet.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, the, there is a lot of interest in the motorsports complex, and certainly everyone on council is supportive of it. We think it's a, it's a great economic development initiative for the city as well, as well as, you know, catering for all the recreational enthusiasts that are in the city, which we know there's many of them. And so we're, you know, we're on the lookout for that, but we can't go to a funding model for it when we haven't got a design done at this point in time, so we'll be progressing that as soon as we can get a chance, yeah.
Would, yeah, I just, when I look at baking a cake, I just don't make, make the mixture. I actually turn an oven on and a few other things all at the same time. And I suppose from, from the outside, as a motorsport enthusiast, you don't get to see or hear a lot of what's going on in regards to council. I mean, it's awesome to hear that a letter has been sent to the minister and we're following up on the land. But I honestly probably can't walk down the street, or we can't hold a, a car show, or, or something to do with, with motorsports in Mount Isa without the question being raised. As Phil said, there is, there is a lot of, a lot of people who are very, very interested to see this project go ahead. And I think we need to sort of see how far we can push this.
So, sorry, yeah, you go. So through you Deputy Mayor, so what we're doing tonight is you're highlighting to the councillors, and this is a draft budget, and what we're doing is consultation on that. And so the Deputy Mayor may well go back and talk to the rest of the councillors and say, hey, there's a big push for this, is there something we can take out of this and move this around? Or move something that we have planned for next year, push it out a year and replace it with more work to be done on the motorsports? And that's where the councillors will go, okay, we've reviewed this, Mr. CEO, directors, et cetera, make these changes that come through. So that, that's part of this consultation.
And yeah, you can rest assured that, I mean, at least once a month, I knock on the mayor's door and the CEO's door about, you know, do we know anything yet? Do we know anything yet? And town planning, so, yeah. It is important to council, and it is one of our projects that we'd like to see get going. And it would be nice to, to do something around two thousand and twenty-three at least, you know, for the hundred years as well. Well, I think without, is there any other questions? Tony, you've been very quiet there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have no questions at all, but I've received a lot of information.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Well, look, I think if there's no more questions from the floor, I'd like to thank yous all very much for coming. I appreciate the input, and we certainly take a few notes from, from what's been said today. You know, it's, we have done our best to build a responsible budget, and given that the year that's happened this year, we've had no increases at all, so I'd just like to reiterate that. And that forecasting into next year is a little, is a little bit tricky, but we're kind of, we think we've got a really good budget there. So, yeah, if there's nobody got anything else, I'll close the meeting. Okay, thanks very much.